All right, it is two fifty-nine and forty-five seconds. Oh, sorry, sorry. All right, so we will officially call this meeting to order. So we have all our members present, but just for fun, we'll go across and do our. Jan Boer, Jack District Two, Carly Cooper District One, and the boss District Four.
Dave Lawson District Five.
And welcome to our guests, both in person and online. I understand this is a really important. You know, and yeah, among many things, we did discussion for so many folks, so I'm really glad that you're here. Listening to our discussions so that then can provide some input as we kind of move through these these. This time, so we'll move to approve the agenda for today.
So moved.
Okay, along the way, hi. So we have two points of discussion today. The first one is to just kind of talk a little bit about a superintendent service timeline and kind of our desired next steps. So I like probably most of you have done a lot of new about this over the last few left week. And you know, have have had some opportunity to have some great conversations with folks and have an idea about some next steps that I think we could take. I'm curious to, you know, kind of start just on a high level. Obviously, what we are, you know, kind of hoping to do. You know, long term with our superintendent. In a position.
Those are three of us. This is not a new thing, unfortunately. We're kind of practiced that, which is unfortunate. But, yeah, I mean, the timeline tells us that I think we probably need to go with an interim. Give us more time to do a hiring process. And if we have some interrums interested, it feels to me like we just start doing some interviews right away. Get somebody on board as an interim, whether we would decide whether that's a six month or a year or three month, whatever. Or open. And then then we take more time along the way to look at what the final superintendent search timeline and next steps. And if we bring in other experts to work with us. That's my thoughts.
Which makes very good sense to me. Ensure that.
Yes, I think. Two and a half months is isn't enough time to do the full search thing, so. I have a review of it last time. We did a couple of things. One is, yeah, we worked with E S D to try and find some folks in the area who might be interested. And also, at the same time, we did do some community forums to get input about what people were looking for. In the interim superintendent. And so did those and then develops. Views and saying, we start with the same, we had kind of qualifications in this, which is looks fairly consistent. I mean, I want to change it a little bit depending on what it says, the input we get from the community, but anyway. And then, at the same time, start the longer term search thing, which involves usually finding a search firm or something. But, you know, developing the, and a lot of that, the perspective that is about the qualifications and what we're looking for, and so.
In the firm itself.
And well, that.
Yeah, well, yeah, in the firm.
And then, yeah.
So anyway, yeah, all of those, those three, but in the short term. This time I have the advantage. Last time, there was a superintendent that was gone and the more of a rest of family, you know. Dr. Nissans, what he said to the end of June, so we had a little more time there, but still, I think, yeah, the interim is the right, right way to go.
See, I'm a bit hesitant to think that we need to go to the community to find an interim.
Fine, I'm just going to ask what they're.
I know, and I would. That's a lot of work, and I think if we're going to go to them to look. For the long term interim. But that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and the last time, I think, looking back, we did it with them. I mean, it's not the extent of community input that you would get in a bigger one, but but at least give people the opportunity. Who may be interested in providing input. I mean, I think we did it to three of them, just kind of forum, just provide, you know, tell us what you think.
Well, we provided an opportunity for them to present themselves, and then they could voice their opinions.
Yeah, I mean, I, if if it's going to take us a month to do those forums, then we're we're out there quite a ways.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
But we're kind of bound by who's available to be an interim.
Or not. A little bit, yeah, sure. I, I saw one of these, so something we're all kind of on the same page about, um, the desire to to fill over the role of interim. While we seek to do a more robust process for them. Yeah, so so we're all same with that. So, you know, I've heard from several folks at this point, that, you know, there's a kind of a pool of experienced retired superintendents. That are, you know, kind of willing and available, you know, to potentially step in for that interim period. And so it's it sounds to me, and also that right now is quite a good time to be seeking an interim. Because there's a lot of, this is the time when, you know, contracts are ending or other things are happening, shifts are happening, places. So the pool may be a little bit bigger than than we might think. Kind of some of the guidance that I got as well was to, you know, work with the E S D with John and. And even a lots of to, you know, I did, I hear some of the things that were, we're really hoping in interim, whatever that may be. And then they can work within their four folks to to find. So, you know, maybe if we approach it with the hope that there's a wider pool than. And then if we're finding that's not the case, then that could shift the wheel. I think one of the the biggest things that I'm curious about from, I think. Is in some ways that, you know, I think we have a a good understanding from like, from an organization, from a, you know, keeping the wheels of the district turning. You know, what we might need in interim, but I'm curious to know, you know, what 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 type of individual, I think, might feel supportive for can for the district. Folks in the district to have some sort of stability or safety during this time of interim. I say, I think that's the biggest thing. So how are we still trying to cultivate a community of care, care, connection and safety as much as we can? Knowing that this is unstable time anyway, right? So creating stability in the instability. So I, that's, that's kind of the feedback that I'd be curious to know. And I think, you know, there are some perhaps characteristics of a leader that might help folks feel that way, that we could, you know, say, these are, these are some things that we're really looking for. I don't know, yeah.
Yeah, you know, the the idea that, I mean, it's true, there is a pool of retired folks out there. So the last time, you know, Dr. Nissans was the interim and then he became the interim. So, you know, if if it's possible, I prefer, you know, not to have kind of a caretaker. I mean, if if there's somebody out there who could take over the longer job, rather than you have consistency all the way through, rather than having to shift another time.
Sure.
And I mean, we didn't know, maybe somebody like that, there wouldn't be nothing, but that would be kind of, I mean, I thought it went pretty well, so I would kind of prefer that.
And we get closer to that if we had a little bit of just the community for, or the match, right? So.
And I, you know, for me, the kind of the immediate thing we're looking at is, is going to be important to me. Before somebody has a good grasp on the financials, because we're going to have a really challenging financial problem coming up really right now. And then also, we're having contact negotiations, you know, during the end of this year. So I think everybody, you know, experienced person is going to be, because we, in the past, we've had a lot of, you know, upper covered people who want to, you know, use this district. Setting some, and I think that's not what we want at this point in time, so.
Looking for someone for that season.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if that are even longer. Well, to me, that's a plus. You know, we'll see who's who's out there, but.
Yeah, I, there's there's part of me that says, no, I just want to substitute and not one that might step into the long term. Because then. That's really hard to, if it isn't the long term, if we kind of set it up to say, oh, maybe you'll be your long term. We'll test you for this time, see if we want you to be the long term. That's, that's a different setup than to say, we're going to bring you on for six months while we do our search for a real one. And I'd almost rather have that person not be able to apply. So be a person who doesn't want a long term. I understand the stability, but I think. I don't know, that's.
I'm just looking for trends there in the high school. And, you know, we have a term, that was the interim, but.
But we weren't looking at them as long term. We weren't really, oh, I see, when when those few people came, yeah.
And, and I think the payoff of having waited, gone through that, seems to be more worth it.
So are you saying it was good to just have the interim so that we could do the long term work? Or are you just? Yeah.
Have been positive.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and I, you know, it. I'm I'm curious, so like, I I don't disagree, I think I'm just checking a little bit, Kirsten, what are the, what are kind of the biggest benefits you see in just like having a substitute?
A substitute, in that they they come in with no notion of change. They come in without having to show us anything other than that things continue as they are. They're not. Yeah, they're not trying to be something for us that we're not necessarily acting, asking for just, if it's just a substitute. And, you know, I've done a lot of substituting. I know it's just, you know, you're just basically covering and making sure everybody stays safe. Sometimes you don't even do any teaching. Sometimes you're just holding the pieces together. And I kind of see some value in that. We have, we definitely have people that are moving and shaking and doing things. And we, and we probably want those to continue moving and shaking and have that stable umbrella over the top that says things are.
I think it's actually, as you were talking about that, something that struck me as a potential other benefit, even particularly as we're going through some of these negotiations. And then the this, this tough budgeting time is, in some ways, having someone that doesn't have a long term stake in the game. Would hopefully then actually center community voice in a different way, because there there was the house. In the game, and so they're relinquishing, I I don't know, I wonder if if it could open the door a little bit for, just, I don't know, does that make sense at all? It could go either way, it could go either way, for sure.
You know, they don't, if they're, if they're here just to be stable or in front of paycheck, that, you know, what what's scared them out in the game, I mean, I really just, you know, keep the lid on. I mean, I think our kids deserve something better than that.
But I think that the, the the sense is that we want somebody who is invested, but not wanting to change things. Just kind of hope God is in continuing what we're doing without having to make a lot of changes, you know, coming into. Let's get this going here. Unless it is a change that on the board, a field that we need to make, because I think that's also a great opportunity, right? Someone again, who doesn't have long term stake in the game, just stays, you know what, here's some things that we really need to do in our district, right? Some change that we do need to make, and maybe it might be easier for that person to do it. Right, um, but, you know, I I don't know, I think there are, there are certainly kind of pros and cons, and and maybe. Again, this is something I think is hard for, I I find it hard to really make this decision. I think we're grappling with this, my guess is there are probably opinions and thoughts around that elsewhere. And, you know, it sounds to me too, like, it's just a slightly different mindset, right? And going into it, because again, the interim, you know, you're well wanted, but I think it's just, you know, maybe your mindset is, if we can have an interim that potentially we are permanent versus, you know. So maybe, yeah, so maybe that's a piece of survey or a question that goes out, like, you know, again, what is going to help us have the most stability in this unstable time?
Yeah.
Stability, yet provide opportunity for a change, if need. Yeah, I don't necessarily see stability as stability, stability, I see as you have a stable foundation to actually have to do things, right? So, yeah. So a certification, so a survey would be maybe a good option for us, too. Could be, yeah, for sure, absolutely. Yeah, so. I'm sorry, I'm. You're in for a lot of service. Your thoughts? It was your very, we're really looking for a superintendent.
Yeah, that's, that's the question. Are we asking for what we're looking for in an interim or in a superintendent?
Well, so I think, okay, so I think right now we're thinking about, so, okay, so I'm kind of thinking about this in two different bases, right? One is the kind of this mini process that we're going to go through, select of the interim person. And then the phase two of that would be the, the, you know, long term superintendent. So I think for this piece, yeah, it's. Much specific to interim, what is going to be the most supportive?
So, yeah, last time, just kind of get two quick during these, you know, interim discussions, there are two questions. What qualifies, what qualities and characteristics do you think are most important for an interim superintendent? And we have three options, internal, external, or E S D appointment, for your preference. Because, yeah, I, we're going to talk about that, I guess, but, you know, you could select somebody internally, potentially. I mean, lots of issues to that, except somebody externally. And then the E S D appointment, I think, is the default, is we can't, through our job, and pick somebody, they will pick somebody for us. Which is, and that, yeah, we don't feel that.
Yeah, I'm thinking that. If we're wanting someone that's seasoned. Well, I think you do a process, right? And the process is the same for, if there is an interim person that we're interested, they would go through the same process that we have with this interim position. And, yeah, anybody that thinks you're pointing this role and stuff, I think there's value in, you know, having experience in a lot of these things as a superintendent. So I think, I think, yeah, I think they were safer to jump in there. So is there interest in trying to work with the E S D? And the reason I ask is in part of, or we would talk a little bit about kind of the board recruitment work that we're hopefully going to be doing with them. So they're actually, they're courts meeting on the flying team. And so the, I kind of, what tentatively could happen is, at that that board meeting, they're both talking about kind of the board recruitment supports that they can offer us. As well as, I'm getting an update on on what our hope is and our ask is and supports we need in this round. And then, so if we would like their support, then we can plan, schedule a meeting for shortly after their board meeting to talk about putting up our actual plan together for this mini process. And I think, you know, we can. Maybe even bring some of those questions to them about, you know, what's the best way to get community to vote without burdening this shorter process that we have, you know, with that. So, and then, so my problem was, we meet with them at the end of April, have another special meeting in early May, end of April, early May, to say, community, here's our plan. And then really kind of spend the month of May doing that, hopefully to have someone pointed into that role by mid-June. Which is just the word Dr. Nissans would, would, um, be thoughts on.
Yeah, and so you're kind of the meeting of the P S D board.
Yeah.
They're probably not, in the past, I mean, we've worked with John Wells to find, you know, people in the area who might be interested in this position.
Correct.
And that's not, that's not the P S D S D board, that that's, that's John Wells. It is connected.
Yes, for sure, so that's a piece of it. But the ask of the board, and this was kind of also kind of piggybacking on the conversations that we've been having about. How they can support us with board recruitment and community engagement around board recruitment, this would be a piece of that superintendent. They got staff, right, so the board, you know, requests that. If John helps with these things, right, Dr. Welsh, then they can use some of their staff resources to definitely support some of those sessions, right?
We'll just have a conversation with John Wells.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, Charlie, you just have that conversation.
I don't think we need to go through.
Who he knows is is available, get a sense of what, I mean, he's the one that gave us some guidance on, this one's going to bring you this, this one's going to bring you this.
He saw this, it's connected in the in the region.
I understand that, so I think I was, this is what I was under the impression is the process would be based on what I heard from Dr. Nissans, who heard from Dr. Welsh, who then. And also from what I heard from the, from the board. So it's just again, an extra layer of support, I think, is worth it, so I, yeah, okay.
I see that as the ongoing support going forward with recruitment and with the new superintendent search, but for to get the interim, it feels like, that's just a conversation with John.
But we still have a process, particularly if we want to engage community in any part of it, right? Okay, I guess maybe here's the honest piece of hate. I'm still trying to be on leave, it's a subject, right? And so I personally feel like my capacity, I'm trying to limit it a little bit more, right? Because I have a different obligation at this moment. And so either, so I think we just need either a slightly more group thing, coalition around this. So maybe it's, we get a few folks who are willing to help kind of drive this, and we work with John, I I just don't think that right at this moment, I think I need some support. Sure. Is anywhere I'm I'm not with this, because if it's totally left in my hands, I just, that's a little bit unfair to me at this moment and where I'm at, I think.
Well, I'm I'm open to have any of us have that conversation with John or two of us, whatever.
Yeah, because he's just, I mean, what we need, first of all, we need to have some sense of what we're looking for in interim, you know, qualities, so that when we go to him. Okay, this is what we're looking for, and then he can, you know, bring people or put the word out of his network in terms of. What might be some people who'd be interested in that.
And the nice thing about working with John is he knows the just.
I was going to say, he knows more than we do about what we need.
Okay, so then what is going to be, I guess, in our process, and who is going to do it to to get that feedback from our stakeholders about what those qualities have been drawn? Should it once, right? Okay. I don't think so, you can't actually do the monster.
I don't think, okay, I don't remember, who organized that the last time? And.
Really good at it, doesn't she?
Did somebody, I mean, I don't know, I didn't, I wasn't at those community meetings, was it in person, this is back when we did in person?
There is this wonderful email from that time from me. We did, what we did was. They had great options, they emailed the board, they did a survey. And in the building, in the staff room, there were four questions, the survey. And they had a poster that was in the staff room, and they did this right on there. They didn't have their name written on it, yeah.
And this was the interim or the full term?
Yes.
And then I didn't know, yes.
That was for both, and I just think that's too confusing for both.
Yeah, I think we need to make it specific to interim.
Of course, it was possible to create one, yeah.
And then we.
Then you did it again, yes, for a superintendent. Yeah, and they also worked with a search firm at the time, they had like, several meetings, meeting, staff meetings.
Yeah.
But right now, I don't just have that many, so.
Right.
So, yeah, it's going to perform a survey. To collect information from anybody who wants to.
Still here. Your concern is not just getting it from the staff that helps the community. I mean. If it's online, it can go out.
Listen, listen, I was being scared of this. Asking your community, but what mechanisms have worked and, you know, do we get much?
We do, actually, yeah, I mean, I think.
Which which mechanisms have generated?
I think if we found a survey or a mission, you know, be it email.
Be it email.
You can, without, you can like fly in, you can make.
Yeah.
A paper, yeah, like a Q R or something like that. Oh, and you go. I don't know, I don't know if you want to, that's kind of like, like the world can.
Yeah, yeah.
Leave that, which maybe is okay, but I feel like you've been to the school, I'm not careful.
Yeah, if it's on social media, it's really hard to track, too, isn't it? Getting one person. Yeah, one person goes forwards it or.
So do you want people to, as long as we'll be having any meetings coming up that they could? Not that I know of. We could certainly schedule something. We could definitely schedule one with a session. We help for them to make that. Yeah, I think, we don't have a lot of time, so we, one was a meeting session and determining.
So then, then it comes down to, okay, so what are the questions on the survey beyond, I mean, it's just a wide open. Qualities and characters of some kind of thing, and then just some people that.
Do you want to ask them about the interim or is it without interim?
That was the only one that I asked before, I don't.
Yeah, this is really no, that we need to, what's more important is the.
Yeah.
All the interesting.
Because that's, I mean, that's kind of, I think, another that, I mean, basically what came back, no, surprisingly, it's rather similar, is just, you know, kind of some stability, consistency, that was the main thing. But. You never know if you ask, so.
I think you should know what that means to people.
Yeah.
So maybe a question about like, what does stability look like over the next year while we're on the search for a permanent superintendent? Or is that too weird of a question?
Well, it'd be good to do somewhat of a multiple choice. The reason why is if you just get a time, pass answers, it's harder than it seems to be. So do you feel like good choices, and then as a result, if you have several questions, like somehow ask, like, give us more details, something.
Right, right, that's, that's, I think, the most important.
You could do that event, yeah.
Yeah.
And then have an overhead. Piece of it as well.
Something that's going to be user friendly, not only for them, but for us.
So, okay, so the last time, you know, we came up with desire characteristics. So we have a list of, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
It's me.
And that was for the interim? I'm going to keep asking this.
I think this is for the superintendent.
Yes, I think so. Yeah, I think, and this is just kind of my personal opinion, but it does sound similar, I think, I think someone like. I don't necessarily want to come back with nine characteristics, right, for the interim. I think it needs to be a little bit more, and you know, that needs to be clear cut, like a little bit more cut and dry than that, maybe just, you know. If you could think about like the three most important things to you, and as we navigate this next year, what would that be? Just because, yeah, I mean, we could find a lot of things that a lot of people, if we can really hone in on strengths of individual candidates that really need these top three priorities to make a week. Makes a lot of sense to me. So, I guess then. Okay.
It is, it is, I mean, see, like, you probably got to, was, got to, well, because you have some, some idea of, you know, what. We want to do in terms of a superintendent.
Okay.
Because it's.
For sure, again, obviously, for sure, again, I was with the impression that that was something that he would be willing to talk, we would work on this on. So if you're saying that that's not what he's there to do, I guess that's fine, I.
I was thinking that was a conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we went in and said, you know who we are.
Yeah, so I think it's an initial conversation, and then a maybe follow up conversation once we have those things, but I think to start it off, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I'm guessing he probably, well, I know, I mean, he already knows. So that's kind of, and so now just, yeah, we're going to get some. So, okay, so the first thought would be just to get some input from him about. What he thinks, what he's wanting.
Yeah.
Or what would be helpful.
And it might be available. And it might be available.
Yeah.
Who who does he see out there that could step in and do this?
Yeah, I know, that gets a little, it gets a little tricky because, um, initially. When somebody applies, they don't necessarily wanna say to.
They don't have to name them, yeah.
Well, yeah.
They could just say, I know of someone who's. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just, it's just something to keep in mind to go through this, you can't. At the point they apply, then it becomes kind of a knowledge of the.
Right, but I'm, I'm really thinking we're getting a retired person, we're not pulling somebody out of a different position.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that rule is definitely there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I think for for me, I I I, our first conversation would be, you know, multiple things, right? One is obviously just reminding, of course reinforcing, this is what our hope, ours, our plan is, we would like your support. Um, in in filling this interim position, um, one, yes, what, you know, are there folks that you've already maybe heard from that you think might be great? Know who they are, but like, you know, what's kind of out there and. Um, I'd be curious to know also what input might he have about how to get input, right? Just to make sure that we're thinking, you know, maybe that maybe he's had an idea, um, that we haven't thought about. Um, or even maybe something, you know, there's something particular that could be on the survey, right? We also need recommendations on that, um, and then just for the fun of it, say, is there any particular support, um, in those things, um, that I want? Um, I think that would be, yeah, great, and then if he's like, yeah, we can totally help with some of that, push some of that out, uh, great, I mean, whatever. Um, awesome, then he can help, if not, we'll say, great, we'll get our information more about you in a few weeks when we have a more idea of what we're, what we're looking for. Yeah.
So, we've done the first, okay, so, first, first that is one or more of us, well, one or two of us.
I can do it, or, I don't care.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, and then Dave. We can flip a coin, let's flip a coin, who's got a coin, all I have are credit cards. Okay, all right, Dave, this is you and me, okay, either you or me.
Well, this has. Step down, we should do that.
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm.
No, why, you, you volunteered first.
It's okay, I'm stepping in.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so, okay, um, great, there we are, uh, so we'll return it and John to, um. Um, so I think, um, I think in the meantime, um, so moving on to, I guess, the communication piece. Um, we definitely need to communicate at least that we have things in motion, right? Even if we don't have a whole plan, I think at bare minimum, say, this is kind of what we, this is, um, this is what we are doing to develop a plan. Um, to then find an interim person, um, to then do a whole research for a permanent person, not just starting from.
And how, how do we start with an oops? That says, oops, we should have let you know this, but it came from the other source first, but we are now. I I don't know, it just felt like we really made an oops there.
Yeah, okay, tell us, not me.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I'll be really honest, so, oops, um, I think what they have been amazing, uh, for. Everybody to hear it from us, from after virgin, um, absolutely, um, in the, in a little. Bit of the board's defense, um, we heard about two hours before the ESD announcement came out. So we really didn't have a whole lot of an opportunity, um, to draft anything, um, and I don't know why that is, that's okay. Um, it just kind of is what it is, um, and unfortunately, again, um, I just wasn't in a place that day to stop what I was doing. No, I know, interesting, I think it's important to name, like, the reality, right, of everyone where as a board. And acknowledge, um, that, you know, we still have something out, right? So we still have, have a oops, right? Um, and there were some communication things that were just so far beyond our control, um, because other entities were involved. And unfortunately, um, perhaps didn't think as much about the impact that that could have, um, on our, our district. Um, so here we are, um, so I wonder if maybe just something kind of simple and short, uh, we could get out, um. By Monday, so, uh, and again, simple and short, this is what we're, you know. Looking for, we wanna look for an interim, we're with ESD, I like our process for that, um. And then, and then.
The first, the first has to be notifying that Flip is moving, right?
She's already said something.
I know, but doesn't that need to come from us to share, us saying that since we've. You know, gotten the information that Flip will be leaving us, blah, 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 then. We are grateful for what he's given and this is our process to. Don't we?
Yeah, sure, yeah, um, who wants to take a stab at it, right? Or is that something that you are willing to drop for? No, I.
No, that's okay.
No, I can't, um. It's amusing, you forgot about the work.
Yes, I'd be happy to do it.
Tomorrow, Monday.
That's what I can, yeah. So we get it off to by the end of the day, Monday, that would be cool, yeah, okay. And that feels so capable to.
Is it possible to get it out earlier than the end of the day because there's gonna be a lot of. Um, what do you think?
Oh, I think it is, if I spend, yeah, if I spend it to people, make it, and if you can get it out to people who, that's true, okay? You can easily get it out.
Cool.
Um, and you know, maybe in there, just include something about, when you're keeping out, or survey and some other ways to give some input on the interim. Um, superintendent.
And we have suggestions about.
Yeah, yeah, open up ideas to.
Do you want us to write it down as well?
I think so, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, too.
Um, I guess the biggest piece about it going out so quickly is the translation component. Um.
It just happens.
It's not, not, or bits, but it's something.
What's the? Can you embed a, can you embed a page to the website into an email? So then it translates when they open it up?
Well, yeah, keep it that hyperlink, then they know to go to that, if they can't read what they're reading, is that right? Is that how that works?
Usually, what, I think we don't get it in Spanish, I don't think we do that. So that's usually what it's, it's usually the email text in English, um, they'll, they're very likely to the, this may be really good.
Wonder if that could be like a, I guess, what would be the process for if you set a catalog on a sentence or two, we could probably get that? How quickly would we get like a sentence or two presented?
We may be able to do that, that impossible, I will say, the more. Do you do, are you trying to go out, maybe, or is like any of us should, I'm just gonna go short of the translate.
Some sort of invitation or reminder that is there.
I I guess my big concern is making certain that it gets to the staff. As soon as possible, yeah, because they're the ones that are killing them, seem to be killing them, creating suspicious stress.
What would it feel like then, maybe to do just an email to staff and then spend the time it takes to translate the email to our most famous? Okay, cause I don't think there's as much that urgency, right?
Okay, that's true.
That would feel better to me, um, yeah.
Good compromise.
What other communication, um, related things do we need to discuss today?
Is there a possibility of, you know, we're talking about mid-year of getting the interim off, is there a possibility of getting them? On a little bit sort of, so that that transition will be a little bit smoother?
I think it probably would have been something, how, just kind of how, um. How quickly we are taking, like, moving through some of these things. Yeah, for sure, I think so. Yeah, absolutely. Maybe not, they'll start to chill up, because they do have to be ever, we can talk about all the issues more.
And that would be a double budget hit.
True.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that we would pay the interim the same amount. I don't know what would.
Maybe that could be something that we inquire with John as well, just kind of what, what, um, how districts normally navigate a interim.
Yeah, that's good, then. Well, it's all, it's all public what people trade. Yeah.
Do the next steps feel clear? So I feel like sometimes what happens, we want, we feel like things maybe don't go clear enough and then things don't.
So, so, you sure are gonna go and talk with John Bowles, and then you're gonna come back? How's, how's that reported, being come back, we're gonna. For the next meeting in April, or?
Um, so, uh, I think it probably depends on when we're able to connect with John, um, I know. Yeah, so, um, maybe we can add this, provide a update via email, um, early next week. Um, if we've been, if we've been able to schedule a meeting, um, cause it's probably a little, um, on the schedule, and he's available to connect with us. Um, but I mean, I think, where was our time right now? I mean, I think, you know, later than the second meeting in April, which is the twenty eighth, right? Yeah. I think it's reasonable, but, you know, later than that, we have a, a, a pretty comprehensive update.
The next step after that, I mean, we're talking about, um, a couple of things, one is. Establish, creating some kind of. You know, what we're looking for in an interim, and then. Also getting some sort of input, we're talking about a survey from the community and then. Calling those two things, um, together. So that they can be, which would kind of finalize what we're looking for in interim, interim, and then. Um. Presumably communicating that to John Wells. This, I guess, survey. Is your recruitment, recruitment person?
Well, we could do the survey in the meantime, couldn't we? Yes, we don't have to wait until after that meeting, if we know what survey questions, like, we want.
Asking me to be back about it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Maybe not that.
We'll have to.
Not to do that, I, I mean, yeah, the questions can be pretty open-ended, straightforward, you know, what you're looking for.
I think the benefits of, to getting this input is he's probably had a lot of experience with other districts doing this, and. You know, maybe there's a question that's recently been asked that's really worked, right, or got more insight, so maybe there's just something that maybe we're not. Thinking of, um, so, you know, these questions, yes, certainly, they're, you know, I think they're.
But if you guys come back with those ideas, could one of you put a survey together to send it to us? And we wouldn't need to wait till the end of April?
Yeah.
Yeah. You are, time is short.
Yeah.
Cause we also have to go through, once we kind of get that, you have to go, you know, put the notice out and then. Go through an interview process, you know, hopefully get people applying and select one, so.
Quality of, making sure that we're balancing, right, urgency with the values that we have, right? I think it's about.
Um, incorporate the unions' opinions and. Maybe with.
Yeah, 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 I mean, of course, I mean, I definitely, you know, think that, you know, their input is, of course, incredibly valuable. Um, you know, I think, again, kind of with the one more mini process for the interim, I'd be curious to know what they, what I would link to them. But of course, as we think about, like, the larger process, finding a permanent superintendent, I mean, partnership with, we're thinking is gonna be incredibly. Important. Yeah. And for support, right, and again, there, you know, I think just even person power, right? Um, then again, we're just for people, and so that's, again, that's why I keep kind of going back to what, what other supports the ESD might offer, so this is. Person power, is it, is it only there across within the, the union or even, you know, other, other parts of the district that wanna call, here's some person power time or something. Um, uh, please, like, um, uh, that'd be easy.
So, um. What is the, what do we have to do to put that ask out there for an interim? We have to put it on, in the newspaper, on Indeed, on PSESD? Is there a requirement of how we have to post this, or can we pick someone without posting it?
With all this information that you're gathering through surveys and questions? And speaking to John Wells, she's taking that and giving you guys three or four candidates.
Well, that's what, so we're not posting it, then, right, we're, I'll, the post itself, you're asking, yeah. We don't have to post, it's more important process, right?
I mean, well, we, so, I mean, I look back, that's what we did before.
So we don't have, we don't have to pull it all together, get qualifications and post it as a job.
No, because then once, because that happens, then you go through your, that process first, your independent firm.
Right.
Firm, you select that, and then they work with us on.
Right.
For matures and.
Yeah.
Announcements and.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, yeah.
And not to say that they might not be beneficial to post a few places, and maybe that's a question I can ask.
I think he's just gonna give us three names, and they're really good names, and we're gonna choose one of them.
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, that's mine. You're my goal, isn't that my magical world?
Okay, so, go to that, so you're gonna go to the, uh, so the survey. Um, by the second meeting in April is, if you guys go to John Wells, and you get this incredible question. That you wanna ask on the survey, then you'll put, we can, we can start with, we start with, pardon? We can start with the, the one question, and then if you guys see something else, put it in, and so then, at the April twenty eighth meeting, we can have essentially. Finalize it.
Yes.
Couple of questions for a survey, okay, and then, uh, that could go out in. For maybe two weeks ago or something, for. And, um.
My magical world, we already have a person.
Well, yeah.
It do already exist somewhere, so, you know that.
Then why are we?
I know, that's my question.
I'm just trying to lie.
Yeah. Because we have a value, or we say we have a value, of input.
Right.
Community input, and I wanna live into that value and act on that value, um, and. So, I, I, you know, who, who mind necessarily to say who the best person is, right? So it's not superficially, because I'm ready all, I'm sorry, but it's, it's, it's not.
No, I get it for the long term, I, I, yeah.
No, I think it's, I think it's a good, except, I'm just trying to kind of get as fast as we can even, so that we can get to that for the rest of it. And then, I mean, do we, do we even need to come, do we need to come up with? Some board approved, you know, what we're looking for in an interim?
Um, you know what would be kind of interesting, something big now, what if we just took the survey like everyone else? And then our input was just confused into the survey, and then we took the collective.
So you're asking someone to take all this log test and boil it down. A few bullets?
Yeah.
Who's gonna do that?
I, I think, I'm not sure.
We need to do that, and I'm sure there are staff that would be more than happy to, probably so, work with that. Um, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, I think it just takes asking, it takes a little initiative on our part, a little willingness, right? Um, to really dig in and and do some of the things.
And so the feedback will go to the survey, will go to you? Yeah, okay, and then you'll give it to whoever's gonna collate it.
So, as part of the survey. So as part of the survey can we ask if anyone's interested in helping compliance?
So Carrie's saying it's already been, she's.
Google does amazing things too. They just whip out some charts for instance, some. Yes, that's more important than charts, they grab, so I love them, something, okay.
I'm just thinking this, this whole process of putting your agent, creating some list of things we're looking for should be done by the end of April so that we could have, so, so that, and presumably then hopefully John Welsh has this whatever number of.
Magic.
People and then we can, um, use that as a square business instead of interviews and go through processes inside somebody. In there. So the question is, can, can you get all this survey by the end of May instead of by the end of?
No, I, I don't think so. But it also depends on, again, when we're able to connect with John. So, um, I think what, I think if we were to have the survey ready to go and maybe this, this is being trying to be realistic here, but I think it may be given earlier. But if we, let's say we had it ready to go May one. We have it available in two weeks, like it says to me fifteen. And we talked to John that week, that would still give us almost four weeks to mid-June to do interviews and, and go that process, which still gives us about two weeks of window room. So I think, yes, there's a sense of urgency and I think it's okay if we take a second craft that they crafted in a way that we're gonna go good about and then do it at the beginning of May. Again, maybe earlier, earlier would be cool. Um, but I think if we did it on May one, that wouldn't be detrimental to our timeline.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's done by, I mean, I last.
Oh, you said data collection. You said data collection.
The whole, yeah, the collection and applying it into a, to a, um, you know, characteristics or whatever, some form that people are looking for in, in, in terms of.
Yes, yeah, I don't think that would be really impactful. I think the survey can go out at the end of April.
And then, I'm just saying, the first two weeks of May.
Yeah.
To do the creation and then.
And analysis and then, yeah.
And then, okay. The interviews will happen between May.
If we can meet with one, or we are, absolutely. Yeah, we could probably have shell the survey created and then just, you know, update it a little bit.
Yeah, and also we don't have to wait for the twenty eighth meeting, you know, we can, you know, additional meetings. So the twenty eighth isn't necessarily.
And there's the twenty fifth, I told you the wrong date in my head. Anyway, twenty fifth, but yeah, I think that probably before, and finally I just also want to give us some reasonable spaciousness, because I said it too, being a person that's like, oh, we get it over in March. Um, we can't, now we want to do it, um, well, as well as we can and then you can do this timeline already.
So if we want to reach out to staff union people to help correlate all this information. How do we do that?
Well, Carrie's saying it's already correlated. Carrie is saying it's already correlated.
Yeah, that she, she'll do that. So I think maybe, maybe, maybe what we can do is after we get the survey information back, we have the opportunity to kind of individually look at it. We can schedule a special meeting, come back together. So that can kind of both be, and we can invite people to that meeting and say, please come so that we can share the priorities that we collected and then also get people's feedback on it regularly. We set up time, have a little bit of a conversation, especially, I think we can make that happen, right? Um, uh, and, uh, and then say, great, where we all feel a bit about these priorities and then, so, and that can still probably again happen, I think, in May, um, if not before.
So that special meeting, that would be this, uh, some kind of list of here's the agreed upon characteristics we're looking for in an interim superintendent.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess I'm having a little bit of, of challenge asking the part. You want this in an interim, you want this on a permanent one, so. Cause the characteristics might be different, but then we're asking.
So the asks are on the permanent, those, that's not gonna come till
later.
Much later. The end of this year maybe, right? Cause, yeah, so that's not gonna come for a while. So I, I really, and, and maybe when we send out the actual survey, we, you know, put a little message that goes along with that, like we're really being intentional about, this is just for this time, right? We will come back later for more thoughtful. And there might be, there'll probably be a longer list of priority, we said we wanted a permanent superintendent, right, than the two or three of people that are on the interim. Um, so I think just maybe clarity in the communication, um, when we're sending that out. Yeah, and then, and then reminding folks that, um, opportunity for input, um, will be much more extensive later on, um, when we're with something from a person.
So the agenda for the April twenty five meeting, there should be an item, um, probably board discussion about, um, the survey and is it, kind of where is it? Hopefully it'll be.
Done.
Could work, yeah.
Yeah, I think there wouldn't be any reason why, after you guys meet with John, that you couldn't send us all an email.
Yeah.
Recapping all those steps.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so maybe for some reason, if, if we haven't yet, um, finalized the survey or gotten the feedback out to the rest of the board by the twenty fifth, then it could be a gym item, then it would be more updated where the whole cups are.
But either way, it should be.
Yeah, it should be restated on the twenty fifth anyway, but, yeah.
Cause if it's slowed down for some reason, when you accelerate or whatever.
Okay. Um, and if we realistically, if we were to send out the survey, let's say no later than April twenty sixth, we could realistically, um, do kind of a first review of the survey results that have come back on our already grow, I'm sorry, on the ninety fourth meeting.
So you're thinking of having a meeting, a special meeting to review the results of the survey and develop. So you're thinking the results of this, of survey would be the characteristics that we're looking for in an interim?
It depends what we ask on the survey. Uh, but yeah, ultimately, I mean, this, whatever we ask of the survey is going to help us get closer, gonna help us get to what, tell John we're hoping for and then.
Okay, so there's gonna be, there's gonna be a document that has what we're looking for, which is gonna be a lot of input from the survey plus maybe something else.
I can't say that the, that's gonna look like the, sure, the document, I guess that makes sense, right? We need it in a written form. Sure, what's gonna be on it, I can't say for sure, but yeah.
It's gonna be, we, we'll take it from, from the survey plus maybe something else, anything more to put in. And that will be developed at that special meeting or is that an agenda item for the May ninth?
I think it kind of just depends on timing a little bit. So if it works out to be able to do it at a regular board meeting or even add it to Saturday session on May thirteenth, then great. If the timing doesn't work out, because maybe we haven't gotten all the survey results back, we haven't really had the time to pollinate to look at it. Um, then it's a special meeting, maybe the week of the fifteenth. So I think it just a little bit depends on timing of everything. Um, so if, but if timelines, if a timeline would be really important to you, um, like a more definitive timeline, then I'd probably rather give us a little more spaciousness and say a special meeting would be on like the seventeenth or eighteenth. Um, but I'd rather not call a special meeting if we can do the business in a regular meeting, because then that's just one of your meetings. Yeah. Or it's gonna be six to ten.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get that, this, this meeting that we're, that we're reviewing the survey results with people that may be interested. Is that just, is there any output from that meeting? Or is this just a discussion? I mean, are we actually, because ultimately we need to get this document that's gonna be the characteristics
Mm-hmm.
of the interim. Is that the, the goal of that special meeting is to produce that document at the end of the meeting? Or is that gonna be done in separate?
Uh, if we need.
Let me see. And so I can take that, I mean, I could take any one of us could take the data and put it into a format. It is presented at the meeting and the board says tweak it or approve it. It goes, it, it's in front of us when we interview.
The, yeah, we can make sure that that, that gets correlated before the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's just. I mean, I don't think, I don't think it's a boat on top of it. I don't think. So I think it's just, this is the guiding.
Well, we better have some consensus.
Well, yeah, that, I think we all look at it and say, this works for us, or that we go forward with it, yeah.
And our, I want to add this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And that's fine.
What's the agenda on the thirteenth of May? Do we have our Saturday agenda?
Well, dead nose. Um, no, I, I thought it was a regular meeting that I think was specific to.
It's a Saturday, right? There is a.
Yes.
Okay. So that could be our special meeting.
Could be, yes, yes.
But I also think, uh, John Welsh could help when you guys meet with them. If you give them some of these things to restart with, I'd be able to help clarify.
Yes.
The timeline.
That's exactly one of the reasons why I was hoping to kind of use him as a starting place for some of the timeline components of it, because I just don't know.
He's, um, he's been through this.
Yes. Yes.
More than once with us.
What additional clarity?
Yeah, my concern is just from the history, unless we can kind of nail some of these things down, there, there's kind of more. And this doesn't seem like, and and we do have a time, a bit of time constraint here, so I don't want to sacrifice. I mean, we need to have plenty of time. We're interviewing and because some of the people, they have their own schedules and other time for that interview. So, I mean, if somebody wants to, yeah, take the, take the surveys and, you know, develop a draft of the characteristics, that's good. That would speed things along. And then at the special meeting, simply discuss that and make any modifications that you made in the outcome that we, we would have. You know, that makes sense.
Or make sure that.
But then, the question is, okay, who's gonna, who's gonna produce that document? Okay, did you? Is that right?
Okay, and that's. You just do it and then we'll, we'll critique your work.
Everybody, look, jumping the step in, love it. Okay. Um, yeah, and then I think whether that's, whether, whether it happens on the thirteenth, the, the regular meeting on the day, the thirteenth or special meeting in the following week, I think we can reasonably be prepared to start, um, interviewing or be prepared to start interviewing beginning the week of the twenty second.
Yeah. Okay.
It's gonna still give us five, six weeks of flexibility. So if we're running a little behind in this first step, that's okay.
And we'll, so we'll put on the meeting for the, the status of where, and at that point where, hopefully, at that point, all this the meeting with John Welsh, the survey will be out, the survey results will be back and will be somewhere, hopefully, but anyway, we're gonna check in at that point. And if that's, if everything's good, then we're
So do we ask everybody to set up a meeting with John Welsh first?
I can do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It'll be after the nineteen thirty. I can work the meeting. Thank you. Okay. What other clarity do both need?
Well, I'm hosting. Yeah, sorry. I just, is there? We need to start even looking forward to companies to interview for the next phase, or should we wait? Finish this one and then start on that?
Is this what we need to bring in?
That's an hard.
It's an hard question, yeah. And, and, um, but, but so I was actually, the, uh, Waza, I know, would support us and, and create an R P. Uh, my, my, my thought would be let's, let's focus on one, one side of her life, so we have the stuff, let's get through this.
Okay.
Because we have the time, I'm knowing we're hopefully getting this server, you know, every six three year. Um, yeah, so I, I probably just kind of.
Keep your minds, yeah, I mean, you, it's a goal to have a permanent in place by the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
I don't think so, no.
So you're, you're looking for a long term.
So, I guess, I guess, kind of, yeah, so I guess like what I understand about kind of the pattern and the flow of hiring, um, the districts is like, I mean, the, the best time to do is in the spring for the following year, right? So for instance, right now, um, I guess we'll just use our superintendent as an example, right? His next contract, contract starts in July, right? Um, which is gonna be similar to, I think, a lot of others. So if we really went into the long term, our, our process for the long term is gonna take more than June or July, as we've already identified. So, um, in this, you know, we'd probably be a strategy to talk up with, uh, Dr. Welsh, yeah, sure. This is, yeah, just kind of a little bit of what I've heard already, um, that it, it's likely to bring the most success and the biggest pool of folks doing interviews, January to February next year for, uh, to start in June, July, twenty-four. But I, you know, I think there might be some flexibility once we, once we talk with.
Yeah, that's, I think it's, that one, it's depends who might be out there, who might be good fit and where they are in their.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was just gonna say one work.
Yeah.
But so we're saying, kind of, worst case, we would have an interim for the year, kind of.
Year, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Technically, it's a full year, yeah, July, it'd be July. Yeah. Yeah, and again, I think what that does is that gives us a little bit of space to be really thorough and intentional about not only the R P process and the firm that we select to ensure that that firm aligns with our values as a district, but also to make sure then that, that they're going through a thorough intentional process around the engagement and that. And, um, you know, all of that takes time, right? I'd rather do, um, do the work well and thoughtfully, intentionally find the next amazing person, um, uh, than just one bit later.
But it probably is worth getting, I'm thinking about it.
He's probably already thinking.
Yeah.
Should, should be.
Yeah, pretty good. Yeah. Trying to think about it, time when we maybe to start that. And get it on the agenda for meetings.
Then we can, you know, kind of kind of tentatively plan a special meeting for like right after. Um, maybe even early June, where we then kind of start thinking about that, that stuff for the permanent.
Now, do we, are we gonna say anything on Tuesday night? I know it's not on the agenda, right? For Tuesday night to say anything about this? Would we say anything just to make a, a statement of reassurance?
I feel like re, just re, reread the whatever communication goes out, just kind of missing that acknowledgement. Just in case, just be like, in case you weren't able to see this for the, you know, those family community members that
I think.
Have received it just yet, there is this.
That'd be great. So we, we would have changed the agenda to include that?
Nah, just do it as part of a welcome message, maybe.
Okay.
I'll need to change it.
Okay. I just want to make sure it happens. Yeah. I think one of the complaints that we get is that things are happening that it, that it doesn't come from, from us and then it looks like we don't know what's going on. And yes, we just had a meeting, but everybody doesn't know that. So it's more, the more we can say in our regular Tuesday night meetings, I think it's informative.
Yeah.
I'm making sure how many of you are sitting there.
Cause I'll be in California, so it won't be on my table.
So you're doing. Is it? And I'll be here. Do not.
What, what?
She's on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I'm not gonna be Monday.
On?
Tuesday. At our next meeting.
You're gonna be there?
No.
So we're gonna record.
Well, she.
I'm on Zoom.
Oh, you're on Zoom.
If you want to be here, I'd be here.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, if you have other input, uh, between now and our next update, uh, which is even then and I, um, and, uh, all right, so I'd like a motion to return second on favor.
Good work, team.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Antala, for hanging out with us.